Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming to the town staff presentation on accessory dwelling units. I'd like to go around the room and introduce the town staff, and then we'll get started on our presentation, and we'll have an opportunity at the end for questions and answers. So I'd like to start with Tim.
Hi, everyone. I'm Tim McInerney, the DPW director from the town of Shrewsbury.
Melissa McDonald, Building Department and Inspector.
Alex Moriarty, Assistant Building Inspector.
And I'm Patty Sheehan, the Building Commissioner and Zoning Enforcement Officer.
Joe Riley, Plumbing and Gas Inspector for the town.
I'm Dale Blue, the Wire Inspector in town.
I'm Ruthie Anderson, the Principal Assessor.
Louise O'Neil, the Assistant Director of Planning and Economic Development.
Okay, so to get started with the information on accessory dwelling units, we wanted to let you know that the reason why we're here is because on August 6th, 2024, Governor Healy signed the Affordable Homes Act into law. And with that, with that law being in effect, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities is the regulatory agency that is authorized to promulgate its 760 CMR, which is a Commonwealth of Mass Regulations, 71, which sets the regulations for accessory dwelling units. So that is what our town departments have been reviewing to put this presentation together. So, a few basic information about the accessory dwelling units. An ADU is a secondary residential living space located on the same lot as a single-family dwelling. ADUs can be detached, they can be attached, they can be interior, upper, interior lower, above a garage, or a garage conversion. And we do have the diagram with all of the different scenarios right in the slide that you can see with the labeling underneath them. The maximum size of an ADU is no more than half of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. Owner occupancy is not required in accessory dwelling units or the principal dwelling, and not more than one additional parking space shall be required for an accessory dwelling. So now, we're just going to talk about what the building code requirements apply to the different configurations for an accessory dwelling. So, an accessory dwelling added to a single-family dwelling, so if you have it added as a addition or within the accessory or within the single-family dwelling, the building code review would review the life safety requirements that apply to any other alteration or addition or new single-family dwelling that the building code regulates. Also, there is a fire separation required between dwelling units. Two Means of Egress are also required from each dwelling unit, just as there is now in a single-family dwelling. So now, we'll go over to what if an ADU is added to a two-family dwelling? So, a two-family dwelling with an ADU added to it converts that structure into a multifamily classification, putting it into the commercial building code. Fire separation is still required between dwelling units. We still have two Means of Egress that we have to review, but a big difference is that because it's three or more dwelling units, requires a sprinkler system under the building code. So ADUs detached on a lot with an existing one- or two-family dwelling. The existing one- or two-family dwelling stays the same. Nothing changes for the classification of that structure. The detached ADU is reviewed as a single-family dwelling, a separate single-family dwelling on that lot. Exterior walls do not need to be fire-resistant rated if the ADU is detached and greater than a certain distance from the primary residence or the property line. And exterior walls will need to be one-hour fire-resistant rating if the ADU is detached and less than five feet from the primary residence or property line. We do need a certified plot plan in order to review the separation distance to verify if that rating, when that rating is or is not required. So if you can see this next diagram, you'll see that the red lines in each of the different scenarios for ADUs is, the red line represents a fire separation that would be required by a building code. So in the first one, in the first row, a detached unit, there is going to be a separation distance that would be required, and if you meet a certain separation distance, the exterior walls of the unit would not have to have a one-hour fire rating per the building code. Now, if you go over to the attached unit, the red line does represent the one-hour fire rating that would be required per the billing code. Move over to the next one that's labeled "interior upper level." That is to represent an ADU placed within attic. So that attic, that floor-ceiling separation does have to be one-hour rated. Go down to the next row, "interior lower level unit," so a basement. So if you have an accessory dwelling unit constructed in a basement, the one-hour separation is required, again, between the floor-ceiling of each unit. The next one is above the garage unit. You see there that there's a one-hour separation between the accessory dwelling unit in the garage and the accessory dwelling unit in the main principal dwelling. And then the last scenario is if you have an attached garage, and you want to convert the attached garage to the accessory dwelling unit, it does require a one-hour separation where the red line is shown. So now, I'd like to turn it over to Louise from the Planning Department.
Thank you, Patty. I will speak to the planning board process a little bit here. Here on the screen, we have the proposed planning board timeline for review of any proposed zoning bylaw change regarding ADUs. Around, on January 9th, the planning board referred a draft zoning change to the select board for consideration for them to take it up. And so it's proposed for February 11th at the select board for them to take that up and hopefully refer it back to the planning board for them to host their first public hearing. And if that all goes well, then we will have a public hearing March 6th. And I encourage everyone, you can follow along with that QR code here on the screen, and that will bring you to the notification page to sign up for planning board agenda notifications for you to know when the public hearings will be listed for your public feedback. The next slide. Right now, as it stands, in our zoning bylaw, to back up a little bit, our zoning bylaws only state that an ADU is allowed in the town center district, which conflicts with the state law. So that will need to be updated and removed to be able to be townwide. And so while I can't speak to the full update and what the planning board has in mind, but I think the proposed change, one aspect to expect when permitting an ADU, is that they will follow along with the single-family setbacks that exist in the zoning bylaw now. You can follow that QR code along as well. And on this next slide, this outlines a few things municipalities can and cannot regulate per the state law. So, we can have site plan review, you know, the planning board will be able to take up the conversation if short-term rentals should be regulated, but we cannot require owner occupancy and a few other things like that. So we do encourage you to attend the public hearings to provide your public feedback and comment on this new zoning bylaw change.
And now, we'll turn it over to Tim from the DPW.
Thanks, Patty.
Yep.
Just by way of introduction, I got here in October. We are down as Sewer and Water Superintendent. So my staff, a lot of them in the audience here, I appreciate the work they did on putting these slides together and getting me up to speed on this process. To simplify it, there's a handout you can take away, and there'll be, this whole slideshow is on the website. You'll be able to download, and we have the QR codes as well. But basically, the long and short of it is for water and sewer connections, it's the same thing as if you were going to build a house on a piece of land. Same process, same application, same fees. Nothing is changing. If you had, if you had a new building, you'd need a new water meter. You're building this accessory dwelling unit, you will need a new water meter. The purpose for us to be here today is to share that that's the practice we're going for. We will vet that against what other communities are doing, and we want to have, obviously, the best practices available to us. So this is our first rush at this because we're ready for February 3rd.
That's right, February 3rd.
So, we think this is the best way forward. We're obviously open to input. That's why we're here, talking to the community. So if people think that these means and methods aren't appropriate, certainly give us feedback, and we'll look into them and modify if necessary. I'm not going to, I'm not going to take you through the slides. They're so self-explanatory. If you've ever built a house, you have to do the same thing here as you would if you built new construction.
So as Tim was saying, is that we have the regulation, the 760 CMR 71 that I was referring to, that is what we are, know as the regulation is now that we're enforcing. There's some handouts on the table as you come in, and you'll see that the handouts are redlined. So we had the state put out one version of the regulation, and then put out, with public comments, put out another version of the regulation. So the red lines represent the changes that were made based on the comments. And so what Tim is giving for information on the sewer and the water, fees are the same as single-family houses are right now. So, we have the water, the sewer, and one other slide that actually just gives you some guidance on how you would install the water and sewer services.
Yeah, just the rules and regs relative to separation.
Right.
Either 18-inch vertical or 10 feet apart.
Yep. And of course, these are just to give you the preliminary information and to introduce ourselves for this process, and you could always reach out to any of us for more information. So the next department is, Alex is representing the Fire Department today.
So, good evening. So what is the Fire Department going to be looking at when you apply for one of these permits to create an ADU? If that ADU is going to be attached by an addition to an existing structure, the smoke and CO detectors are going to be reviewed with the Fire Department in the addition of that, that is the ADU. If this is going to be an interior alteration to create the ADU, whether it be an attic, or a basement, or some other portion of the home, again, the smoke and CO detectors are going to be reviewed inside of the unit, but if there's any common areas, there's going to be a review on the locations of the devices in any common spaces as well, as well as the existing unit, assuming that there's going to be the moving of some walls. A detached ADU will be reviewed exactly the same as a new single-family, so smoke and CO detectors. And then, specifically for ADUs that are on the same, that will be behind or otherwise have impeded access from the fire code, there may be a requirement for sprinklers to be put in if this is behind, and that is going to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. So if, if the lot has access, or sorry, if the ADU has access, sprinklers will not be required, but it is important that there is an access pathway, and if we can go to that next slide, the access pathway is going to have to comply with these requirements. It's got to be a minimum of 20 feet wide. It's got to have a vertical clearance of at least 13 foot 6 inches. That's including any trees or anything, any other obstructions up above. The surface has to be capable of supporting the fire truck. The grade cannot exceed 10%, and it cannot be obstructed by anything, including parking. So it can't be used, it can't be a driveway.
And so now, we'll move on to Ruth for the Assessor Department information.
Thanks, Patty. So, an address will have to be assigned to each of the proposed ADUs. We're really trying to clean up some of the addressing in Shrewsbury, so we've developed a new policy for that. In Shrewsbury, it's the Assessor's Office that documents and establishes the new address. So in the online OpenGov system, there's a new application called an Address Change Request. This is going to be required so that we have the address set before you pull any permits for any new units. You'll have to provide a plot plan in the portal showing the location of all units. It'll be reviewed by my office, Public Safety, which is mostly the Fire Department, and our GIS Coordinator, and the addresses will be assigned based on our current policies. Once you have the address, those new addresses will be populated into the OpenGov system, so when you go to pull a permit for 10 Main Street, Unit 2, it will already be in there. And then, as far as assessment is concerned, these will, of course, increase the value of the property, and that will be determined by the Assessor's Office. Timing for that's based on our regular fiscal year process, and the level of completion is inspected on or about June 30th for the next fiscal year. And then we'll inspect upon completion with the Building Department. All new values will reflect a market-adjusted cost of the unit. We're going to start with the cost approach, of course, what it costs you to build it, and then if there's any, if owners have any issues with the final assessment, you can follow through with the regular abatement process.
So that's the information that we'd like to share with you today from each department. Of course, the regulation is brand-new to all of us. We'd like to take any questions that you have now and answer them the best that we can, and if we can't, we'd be sure to get back to you. So if anyone would like to ask a question? And if not, sure. You can come up to the microphone, or we can repeat it any way you'd like to do it.
Yeah, if you can, please come up to the microphone, either at the table or at the podium.
Thank you, Sarah.
Hi, thank you. I just had a question about private sewer and how that would be handled?
Okay, so, right, so a private septic system. So if you have an existing septic system for your existing one- or two-family dwelling, then that septic system is likely not going to have capacity for the existing, for an additional living unit. So you'd have to have your Title V engineer, they could do an evaluation of the existing, and then if that doesn't have capacity, likely it won't, then it would need another septic system on the property for that other dwelling unit.
A separate, could you do a new one that would include all the bedrooms?
Yes, you could.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Yep, you could.
But that would be with the Board of Health, right?
It is, sorry, it is with the Board of Health. I'm answering for the Board of Health, right, because it's obviously private and not the town water and sewer.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
We can add a note for that, right?
Yes, yes.
We're learning too, so that's a good point for us to add.
Because when you do submit a building permit application, it is part of the application to check off whether you do have town sewer available to you, or whether it is a private septic system. So, so that will be reviewed as part of the application.
There's a lot here to get caught up on.
Yeah.
Is it only 900 square feet and lower?
Correct. The maximum square feet is 900. However, say you have, say the principal dwelling, the existing single-family dwelling on the property is, say, you know, only 1,400 square feet, then 50% would be 700 square feet. So 700 square feet would be the maximum size of the ADU, not 900. It's whichever is smaller.
Right. Does this only pertain to family members?
No, no. So it does say, on one of our initial slides, it does say that we cannot have it restricted to owner occupied or family members. So no, it's not restricted.
So an in-law apartment that is in existence right now can be converted to an all, to a open two-family?
So, I'll answer if it, if an existing in-law, because obviously, we have in-law rec, part of our bylaws, zoning bylaw. So, that, in order to be a protected ADU, it has to meet the criteria that we just reviewed. Maximum square footage, you know, would be required to be reviewed. Also, it has to be looked at as a separate dwelling unit. So that means the fire separation is required. We also would have to look at the Fire Department access. So the slides that we showed about where the ADU is located on the parcel, on the property, would have to be reviewed by the Fire Department. So that, if you have an existing in-law, it has potential to maybe be considered a protected ADU, but although the criteria of 760 CMR would have to be applied to it.
Okay.
You need two egresses as well, right?
Yes, two Means of Egress, yes.
Right, exactly.
Because right now, an in-law, if you have an in-law within a single-family dwelling per our current bylaw, one of the Means of Egress can go through the main house, because that's the purpose, that you go to see the in-laws on the other side. But in the case, if something was going to turn into an ADU, that connection between the in-law and the main single-family house cannot be there.
If there is a detached building on the property that has been converted, can the main house be converted into an in-law also?
So in-law and ADU are two separate things.
Yes, I know, but we're, I just, it's a separate building, but the main building would become now an in-law apartment within it. Wouldn't be the three-family setup.
So if you have an existing single-family house, and you would like to use our current bylaw, that does allow in-laws by special permit to the Zoning Board of Appeals, you would be able to do that while having a protected ADU on the property.
Okay, thank you.
Some tricky questions you have there. So, yeah, we'll be learning the ins and outs because the zoning, the zoning will be tricky. We really, once we figure out where, or once an applicant tells us where they want to put the ADU on their property, where all of our departments are very well-versed on what the code requirements would be for that. But applying the zoning for us for existing and what the potential changes may be, that is a little bit of a moving target.
Because I'm bashful. Thanks, everyone. So, a couple of questions. On the town water and sewer, do you not need a separate tie-in?
You do.
Okay, so what if there's no not, or if there's no, how do you know if there's going to be a tie-in there or not?
When you submit your application, we'll, we'll work with the applicant to figure out how to get it metered and how to get the water to the.
Okay, so if there's no other not or tie-in, then you'd probably be able to do a split and then separately meter it, I would think?
Yeah, I think it's a case-by-case, but we've got to wait and see. But the goal is to have two separate lines off the water line into the second ADU, into the ADU with a meter.
Yeah, I'm just going back to like new construction situations where there was no tie-in available, and roads that had to be, that were not able to be dug up because they may be a state highway, and they had already been dug up within a certain period of time, and there were moratoriums and things like that. So I just know there's a lot of moving parts when it comes to things like that.
Yeah, there's some new ones there. Andy, do you know the answer to that?
Yeah. Andy Truman, Town Engineer. So, yeah, I mean, we would treat it like a typical new construction. We would check to see if there's water there. If there's water there, you can tie into it, even if it's a moratorium, because we have to allow it for residence connections. But we will need separate water and sewer connections. We're not going to allow them to be split off the existing feeds.
But the wells, there's no problem, right?
A well would be, again, be like the septic, it would be private, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then the last thing is when, Patty, you were mentioning if there was a third floor that was on a two-family, does that have to have a certain amount of headroom, including, I mean, outside of the knee walls?
Yes. So, so the dwelling unit itself would have to meet all of the dimensional requirements in the building code, right? So if you have an attic, you do have to have sufficient headroom and sufficient square footage for occupancy from the building code.
Is that a percentage of the first floor and second floor, like they do in Boston, where it has to be a certain square footage?
No, it isn't a percentage of the other floors, no.
That's it. Thanks, you guys.
Sure. Would anyone else like to ask a question?
So I had a question about the types of ADUs. You showed various types. Are there concepts of detached with garage and ADU on top, and that 900 square feet or smaller only applies to the piece on top of that detached garage?
Yes. Did you want us to, we could bring up those configurations again?
Right.
Was there one that applies to the question that you're asking?
There's only a detached structure, but I believe the...
Do you see the one, there is one above a garage. Do you see the...
So there's one above a garage, and there's a fire that I noted, but if that was detached, can you have a garage space underneath with an ADU on top?
You can. And so, that was a clarification in the red lines that actually came out in these, because that was one of our questions. So if you have a detached garage, and you would like to build the ADU above the detached garage, the square footage of the garage does not impact the square footage of the ADU.
Okay. But you still need two points of egress from that top?
True.
Okay. And then the other question I had was more in the zoning and the setbacks. It sounds like that's not solidified yet, or do we actually know what the new rules will be? You know, I'm not in the town center. I think I'm rural AA.
Right. Did you want to answer, Louise, about, so, yeah, so what will happen is that in our existing bylaw, we have setbacks, right, for single-family, two-family, and other types of uses. So what is, what's being proposed is that we would follow, we would not be creating new setbacks for ADUs. We would go to the single-family setback requirements in the zoning table that we have, and we would be applying those same setbacks to an ADU.
Okay. So, like, today, setbacks on my property have, I don't know, 20 or 10 feet distance for corner lots and from rear and side. Would that be smaller setbacks for an ADU, such that I'd have more flexibility of placement, or worse?
So what would happen, so your corner lot?
Yeah.
Right, so you have two fronts, so the streets, you know, each street that you have typically, I don't know which district you're in, but typically, it's a 30-foot front yard setback from each of those streets. And then you have two other property lines that are by your neighbors. Typically, it's 10 feet setback from those lines. So now, your ADU would have to meet those same setbacks, same as a single-family.
In my, in my...
Right. So if you were going to put it detached?
Yeah.
And you wanted to put a separate structure, a lot of lots would be challenged with that unless you had a very large lot, right, to meet those setbacks the same as a single-family home.
Right. So I guess that's where I was asking, is, does the ADU now allow you lenience towards those setbacks, or are you still?
So 760 CMR says that we can use, as long as we're not making it more restrictive, we can use the same setbacks that we have for our one- and two-family dwellings, and that's what we are planning to do right now. So, the scenario I just gave you would apply to your lot.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Hi. Thank you for, this is very informative. One quick clarification about the square footage that you talked about, like maximum 900, right? If someone has a house with a finished basement, so how square footage is like, let's say, 1,600, right? So if you do have, it's 800, but if it's seven, 600 square foot finished basement, do you consider that also as part of your divide by two computation? How does that work?
So if you have a finished basement that's properly permitted?
Yeah.
Then that would be considered as part of the square footage. So say that finished basement, which is, could be a scenario, does not have a building permit on file with us to finish that space, then it would not apply.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the second question, is there any guidance about, you know, creating a parking space additional?
Yeah, so, so right now, if you create one accessory dwelling unit, you would have to account for one parking space. However, if you are within a half a mile of some type of public transportation, then that parking space may not be required.
Okay. And it needs to be a designated parking space?
Yes, you would have to show it off.
Or do we have to widen our driveway or any things like that?
You would have to show an off-street parking space to account for that one dwelling unit. Right now, in our current zoning bylaw, our current zoning bylaw for a one- or two-family dwelling is one and a half parking spaces per unit. So you can't have a half a space. So if you have a single-family dwelling, you would have two spaces. Now, if you add an ADU, you have to add one space. So you would be showing that you could accommodate three spaces.
Got it. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to ask a question? I just encourage you to take a copy of the, of the regulation, and then reach out to us if you have any questions. And, and then, of course, this goes into effect February 3rd. We already have our residential permits set up to accept ADU applications, so we should be ready to go with that. So we appreciate everyone who came and parsoned to attend, and as Tim said, we're just going to post this on the town. to post this on the town website, so you would have it as a resource if you'd like to check back. Okay? Thank you for coming.
Thank you Patty.
Thank you.